I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, for members of the board, we have two items to recommend be amended on the agenda. One would be to add, under item J, new business, number five, acknowledge and acceptance of policies reviewed. And number eight, under the same J, new business, consideration of bus lease purchase bid.
I make a motion that we add, as the superintendent suggested, acknowledging and acceptance of policies reviewed and bus lease purchase bid to J, new business, as recommended by the superintendent.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Approval of September 12th, 2017 minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from September 12th, 2017.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Communications and correspondence.
There are four letters of resignation and/or retirement that were circulated with the board. I will address those in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. Moving on, item G, administrative board reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report, and I really only have one item, and that is the Hall of Fame coming up this weekend. So it's our first inaugural year for the Sports Hall of Fame. And Friday night, they'll be introduced at halftime of the football game, and then Saturday night is the induction dinner. And so it starts at 6 o'clock in our auditorium, then we'll break and eat in the cafeteria, then go back to the auditorium for the inductions. And it's been on the news, it's in the paper today, I understand. I haven't seen it yet. And so we've gotten a lot of phone calls at the high school. So anybody that wants to attend, just call the high school, and we'll reserve spots for you. And it's gonna be a great night, really looking forward to it. Last year was the first year of the Academic Hall of Fame, and that went over well, and the sports is going to also. There's only one person right now that won't be, well, possibly won't be represented. I talked to his dad today. But I think everybody will be in attendance or have somebody representing them. So really looking forward to it. Any questions?
I have a question, Dan. Is there a committee that is doing this work, or who is doing this work to make this all happen?
Yeah, so we have a committee. It's made up of alumni, coaches in the system right now, some administrators and teachers that are at the high school right now. And we met from the end of the winter to the spring, probably, well, we met seven times. And so we had quite a list to sort through, and a lot of candidates to sort through. And once somebody's been nominated, they stay on the list. So just because they're not being inducted this year doesn't mean they won't be inducted in two years. But it's a fun process. It's a great committee that we have. And I'm excited to see the results this weekend.
And do people receive a plaque, or what?
Yeah, so they get a plaque. If you come into the lobby right now, they just, our custodians just put up the, we have 77 spots, and so they'll get a gold plate with their name on it and what sports they played. And so they'll see that, and it's to the right where you enter the gymnasium. And that came out really good. So they'll have their name on there forever, and they receive a big plaque that they can bring home.
And is that through the boosters?
Yeah, the booster club. They're paying for the dinner for the inductees, and paid for the plaques, and they are also paying for the wall.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
They came through for us. It's a lot of money.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newitt.
Good evening. I'm Jim Newitt at the middle school, and this is Jessica Freeman. Jessica is a previously approved teacher. She does our literacy, she's our literacy coach, grades four through eight thus far. She has spent a lot of time assessing students, not just at the middle level grades, but also down below. It's kind of a start at lower grades and work their way up. This is kind of a new process with all the assessing under the guidance of Candace Brea, a consultant that we utilize to help us with that. And Jessica just told me, she's got four, five, and six done. She's got seven and eight left to go. And today, there's a meeting with Candace, and identified students who are going to need her support have been selected. And then, they won't have fun scheduling that. But I'm really glad Jessica's here. She worked in Brewer last year doing the same thing. We were able to steal her from Brewer, and we're very glad she's here. Anything you'd like to say?
No.
Thank you for those words. Welcome to EMS. Thanks a lot. Back to our previously scheduled program. In school news, talking about testing, all our students in middle school have completed their eye-ready testing in math and in reading. Parents will get those reports at parent-teacher conferences, which are about two weeks away. Last month, Mr. McCluskey talked about the partnership with The Grand, and we've taken advantage of that at the middle level as well. This gal, Nicole Gardaño, is the kind of education facilitator, and she's come into the class. In fact, I listened to her speak with our eighth grade around the play Frankenstein, and our students got to see that play about a week ago. So it was a very nice connection with kind of the preview to what's coming up, and then a follow-up afterwards. So we're very grateful for that. Grade five also got into our community a bit. Spent a full day at Woodlawn about a week ago. And this is about the third year we've done it, and the kids rotate through various stations, dealing with our local history as well as agricultural, particularly around apples. And it was a great day, beautiful day. Last year, we started grade five dare, not until late March. And this year, Sean wanted to avoid any of the winter months. Officer Sean Merchant has started that. We're now into our second or third week in that program. And we do have the good fortune to work with students academically after school if they're struggling to meet their standards, and then they are bussed home at 4 o'clock. So that is underway. We appreciate Mr. Saunders having a couple buses there for us each day at 4:00 to take kids home. In co-curricular news, our fall play called William Shakespeare's Star Wars will be shown Thursday, November 19th, and Saturday, November 11th. Friday, the 10th happens to be a holiday. And we'll get to share that with all of the students on that Thursday morning. Our athletic seasons are going very well, soccer and cross-country alike. To mention, cross-country did very well, placing second in the Parker Pruitt Invitational at Sumner High a few weeks ago. And then this week and next week kind of close it out with two championship meets. For all parents, just in regard to athletics, Assistant Principal and A.D., Erica Gabionelli, does an excellent job of putting the schedule right on the website. You go to the student tab, and then click on schedule, and there it is. And she updates that if there's any change in start times or any rainouts and rescheduling. It's all done right there, so it's easy to see. With regard to parent news, parent-teacher conferences are coming up on November, excuse me, October 23rd, which is a Monday, and October 26th, which is a Thursday. And that's for grades five, six, and seven. Grade eight is gonna go the 18th, which is a week from tomorrow, and also on Monday, the 26th. Each grade-level team is setting up conferences themselves. It's not being run through the office, so that the parents will respond to the flyers that the teachers are sending home. A week from tomorrow also, it's our first mid-trimester progress report. That'll go home. It'll be parents' first look at how we're doing grading with the 1 through 4 scale and the jump rope program. Our second activity night is a week from this Friday, October 20th. And just to remind parents, we no longer send home a monthly newsletter that's printed. It is available online under the parent tab on the school website. Always the first of the month. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. McCluskey?
Good evening, and thank you. Our students at the elementary school as well finished all their eye-ready testing, and we're looking forward to having those reports come back. And we'll be sending those home at the end of the first trimester. Our classroom teachers and our title staff have been busy screening students in reading in order to make sound instructional decisions for literacy instruction in the classroom. They've been working very hard with that. Our jump rope and Go Math programs, teachers have been working in jump rope and Go Math, continuing to learn how to use them. I've been in several classrooms and seen the Go Math instruction going well. Teachers are becoming more and more familiar with it as they're using it. And the program seems to be progressing very well as the weeks progress. I've given you our enrollment update attached, and just to, it's very, very similar. There's a change of minus one overall. Last time, I think I reported last month, we were at 2:40. We're at, excuse me, at 4:40, and we're at 4:39 as of tonight. So things are maintaining there. Momentum update, Liz Wakem is our instructional coach. Maury Dufour is the Apple representative. They've been meeting with our K-3 teachers in coaching and supporting roles. A few weeks ago, I attended a conference in Augusta for principals of schools that are using Momentum to kind of teach us how we can support the program administratively. It was very beneficial. We also set up a time with a gentleman by the name of Anthony Gallardi. He's a representative from the company eSpark, which is an app that's used a lot in this Momentum program. And he actually came to the school to meet with teachers. I set up a Google Doc appointment where teachers could sign up for times to either come to him or invite him to come to the classroom, whatever they preferred. And we got some of both. Some teachers wanted him to come into the classroom and watch and see how they were using the program with the students, and then get feedback from him. Others wanted to just had some very specific questions, so they met with him in a conference room. But it was a very productive meeting. He was very pleased with what he saw, very pleased with the questions that teachers had. So that worked out very well, and it's really, you know, helping the program. We're in the second year of our pilot program. At some point, I'd like to talk with Mr. Higgins and set up a time at a future school board meeting to maybe have some students come in with a teacher to demonstrate that program. I think that would be very beneficial, and I think you might enjoy that. So anyway, that meeting with Mr. Gallardi went really well, and he was very pleased with how the program's being used in our school and the progress teachers are making. Our after-school program began tonight. Got off to a great start. We have two slots open right now out of the 30. We have two groups of 15, so we have 14 in each group. So we were pleased with that. And the students, if you're wondering, are selected for that program based on eye-ready data and end-of-year Finesse and Pennell score. So it's, there's an academic need that we prioritize when we invite our students there. So very happy with the numbers, and got off to a great start tonight. We had an author visit that the PTF funded last week. It was a 10-year-old girl who, you know, published a book, and I was a little hesitant about having a 10-year-old girl come speak to our kiddos. You know, nothing against 10-year-old girls, but I was just curious as to how this was gonna go, you know? And we were pleased overall, you know, with how it went. The girl was a little bit nervous, but she worked very well. She had a parent with her, and she spoke. The only grades that didn't opt in was kindergarten and grade one because of the way the book, there was no illustrations in the book or things like that. So it was a little bit above their pay grade, so to speak. So we opted for second grade right up through the middle school. And she spent one day with the middle school, and then a second day with our elementary students coming into classrooms and getting teacher feedback. I was very interested. And I was pleased that even the teachers were pleasantly surprised, for the most part, as to the effect that it had on our students. A lot of our students were like, wow, this 10-year-old girl could do it, you know? I wanna be, you know, I wanna publish a book. So I think overall, it worked very well in motivating our students in writing, and we're very happy with how that went. In parent news, I'm doing October's volunteer training tomorrow night. Be at 6 o'clock in the cafeteria or the library, depending on which is being used. But be right there. It takes maybe a half an hour. I'm looking forward to having more parents come and get that training in. We had our October PTF meeting tonight. That was done very well. We're excited. The PTF has chosen to do a Halloween gig for students. It's gonna be on Friday, the 27th, before Halloween, be held at our elementary-middle school in the middle school gym, and be a great little fundraiser for the PTF and give the students, you know, something to look forward to, dress up for, and it'll be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the school, and we're looking forward to that first time. And lastly, the major book fair that comes around this time of year is scheduled for October 17th through the 19th, and we're looking forward to, librarians are working hard to have that organized and get the students motivated again. So, any questions?
Just a comment. Brenda and I had the opportunity to meet that young author after she had been at the school. She came into the cafe where I worked, and Brenda was there having lunch with Connie Sisson, a retired teacher. And so all three of us talked to the girl and her mom, and were very impressed with her, and she gave us a good...
Very impressive young lady.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I think, one thing that was interesting is I was kind, you know, when I learned that the book was self-published, to me, that was actually a benefit for what, how the kids perceived the whole experience and the whole idea of writing a book, because it meant that it was much more accessible. You don't have to get a, you know, contract with Random House to do this. You can just have the idea, write the book, and get it done, and you've got something to show for your efforts. So it was, yeah, I really, I really think that the parent-teacher, the PTF deserves a lot of credit for helping to, I think they were the ones who helped bring this...
They sure were.
Yeah.
They were totally behind that.
Yeah, and so kudos to them, and I think all the kids got to have a great experience from that.
Absolutely.
And two retired teachers get to quiz around what the latest and greatest books were.
Yeah, and she's quite a reader. She's not only a writer, she's a reader, an avid reader, so...
Yeah, she came all the way from North Carolina.
Yeah.
She's from North Carolina, which is fantastic. One last thing I'd like to add. I wanna put a thank you out there to the Ellsworth Police Department and all of the teachers that volunteered and the people that helped put together the Walk to School Day last week. Fantastically beautiful day weather-wise, but we couldn't do it without the help of Ellsworth PD. They were at every street corner where we needed them to be, and they were, you know, just extremely customer-friendly and very helpful. And all of the teachers that, I wanna put a thank you to them as well that volunteered to be there, because it takes a lot of staff. When, you know, especially where I was at, the Franklin Street drop-off over here, and, you know, about nine or 10 buses drop off there. And so there's a lot of, you know, we like to have at least two people per group, two adults per group, one in the lead and one as a sweeper. And so we had a little bit more than enough, which was perfect. And it was a great day, you know, and it was a really nice event. So I just wanted to put a shout-out to everybody that was part of that, and a big thank you for that, so...
Thanks, Dan.
Can I ask you, Stan? Mrs. Bowles?
Good evening. Amy Bowles, Director at Hancock County Technical Center. On Thursday, September 21st, the Department of Ed construction team came to HCTC as part of our application process for the application we submitted to the state last year for construction funds. They have over 80 schools that have applied, and we were, I believe, their 12th school visit. So they'll be conducting visits all year long. And of course, as we hear, we'll keep you updated as we hear any updates they may provide to us. This past Wednesday, Brookside Restaurant opened its doors for the first time, and we were completely full to the brim 10 minutes upon opening. We do ask people to remember that we don't have students at 11:30. We don't open until 12:00, and we had people starting to arrive at 11:20, 11:25. So we just want to remind people that we don't have students at that time. And so it would be great if people could wait until 12 o'clock to be seated. If you're interested in receiving a copy of the menu, it is on Facebook and on our website each week, but we also have an email list. So feel free to call HCTC, and we can add you to that list. And also, a lot of people don't realize that we can do to-go orders. We have several downtown businesses that order from us weekly and send one person from an office to come do takeout. So that's also an option as well, if people are interested in. This Thursday night, we are having our annual FAFSA lab in conjunction with FAME. Any seniors in Hancock County, whether they attend HCTC or not, can attend with their parents and receive assistance in filling out the FAFSA. Refreshments will be provided, and by attending, your name is going into a drawing for a $250 scholarship. Caterpillar Clubhouse opened today at EEMS with a full morning and afternoon session. Things went very, very well. We'd knock on wood, didn't have any crying kids that drop off this morning, which is a bonus.
Wow.
We also want to thank our sites who have agreed to take interns for us this fall. Special Children Friends, The Y, their Defy Early Learning Center, Cape Hill Elementary School, and Ellsworth Elementary School. So we send all of our high schoolers all over, so they receive a broad array of experiences. So we would like to thank them as well. Our Marine Service Tech program was invited as special guest to a day-long cohort for the Eastern Maine Skippers program. As you know, the Skippers program has been a while around for several years at different high schools, looking at commercial fishing across Hancock County and really statewide. And when they learned about our program, they invited Steve Koblenzki and his students to attend. So they were able to be part of the different team building they did that day as well as meeting other students from across the state that are interested in commercial fishing. And Steve got to meet other industry professionals while there. We're very excited to announce, we've been working for about a year on trying to get a specific lab safety training certification for kids in our biomedical program. And Jackson and Sarah have worked it out. So our students will be going in early November for a day to Jackson Lab, and will be getting specific lab safety training at Jackson Lab, and will receive a certification from Jackson Lab for that training. While they're there, they'll also get to tour the facility. So our juniors will get to see their facility for the first time, and they'll also be doing sequencing activities with scientists while they're there as well. And will submit some of their own DNA to look at sequencing. Finally, you'll get formal invitations, but I want to put out a plug that our annual fall advisory meeting is Thursday, October 26th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. All board members and district administrators are invited to attend, along with spouses, if you would like. This is a really nice evening. It's a huge evening for us. It's when all industry professionals for all of our programs come together. We have a dinner. I do a very short state-of-the-school address. And then we break, and people go and attend the program of their choice and provide input and opinions to what they feel that field is in need of for employees, provide input on curriculum, instruction, and assessment for that program. So you're all invited to that evening. If you'd like to attend, we'd love to have you. Any questions?
Amy, does HCTC, they have their own Facebook page?
Yes.
And people can just find that if they just put HCTC in?
Do Hancock County Technical Center spelled out?
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and then different programs have their own pages, and you should be able to see that within our school page as well.
Cool, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sargent?
Good evening. I'm Annie Sargent, and I have the great good fortune, as I always say, to be the Adult Ed Director for Ellsworth. Our academics program is underway. We have open enrollment for our academic courses, so folks can join anytime after some assessment so that we can make sure that we have a good fit for folks so they spend some time doing assessing on their academic skills and their career interests and so on, and then we place them accordingly. We're lucky, we're so happy to have an extra room. It's, it feels spacious, although I think we could use it one more room, but this is perfect for us. It allows students to have a lot more intensity of service. So teachers, our two teachers, Vanessa Richards and Emily Nash, have been very generous and have our meeting with students at a variety of different times. So the students really are behind the wheel, driving their learning, and instructors are there to provide expertise, instruction, guidance, and support, but really at the side. So I'm pretty happy. It's been wonderful. I've had a little bit of a chance to get in and see the classes in action, and it's really fun to watch the students engage with their learning environment and the fellow students in particular, as well as the teachers. It's been great. We, at an August meeting, I talked about the Academy of Medical Professions, and it's a program based out of Brunswick, Maine. And they provide onsite and then online and video conferencing classes around the state. It's a pretty exciting program in the sense that the feedback that we've gotten about those classes has been really positive. So I've made a point to get to know more about it. And I had a couple of students very disappointed that the phlebotomy class we thought was onsite, and it wasn't. And so I'm actually in conversation with Amy from AMP to see if maybe we could have an onsite phlebotomy course here in Ellsworth. And I will do that only if there isn't another organization doing that. But it seems like anything that we can do to support healthcare facilities in terms of employment is a positive thing. And in that light, I'm at the beginning of conversations with a couple of other healthcare facilities about figuring out ways to support them. So that's an exciting piece of my work. It's, our classes are still just starting, but I'm, because fall is so short, I'm already planning the winter and spring. So as always, we like to have our tried-and-true courses, but we are always looking to, for new ideas. So please, this is the time to be in touch with us. We have the good fortune, the Department of Education is providing through World Education a Distance Education 101 class and Making Effective Use of Technology for Learning is a significant goal of Ellsworth Adult Ed this year. I feel like in the last few years, it's amazing. Any employment opportunity happens online. Any training, on-the-job training happens with online learning. It's just critical that all of our students have that kind of exposure. And so Emily Nash, Vanessa Richards, and myself are taking an online course that's free of charge that will guide us through the process of designing a distance education plan for our program. We are required to have one before we can offer any kind of distance education, submit one to the state. And so the first months are about getting the skills and knowledge, and then the second, in the winter and spring, the teachers will be piloting some offerings. So we will report back, but we're very excited about that. And I think that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you're next, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Good evening, everyone. Members of the board, members of the audience and the viewing public. I have distributed in your report, even though they're not final, they're not due until October 30th, and there will still be some minor adjustments made, preliminary enrollment figures as of today. And we've compared them with April 1... And we've compared them with April 1, 2017 figures, and using the October date and the April date to give a comparison of the actual numbers that are reported to the state. As you can see, our total enrollment pre-K through 12 is at 1306 right now, compared to 1255 last April. One qualifier in there is, the numbers from last April did not include students from our sending schools that attended HCTC who are part of the Bridge Program or 10 academic classes at Ellsworth High School. The numbers from October 1 do. However, I think if you look grade by grade, you'll see that we are experiencing a small uptick of enrollment. And I think that's a credit to the people in our schools that are doing the great work that we're talking to you folks about every month. So just some numbers there. When we get the final report done and certify those figures, we'll bring those back to you. Certainly, those figures are very important, because they help to determine what school funding is going to be for the coming school year. And as you all know, we'll be starting the budget process sooner rather than later. Just to follow up on what Mrs. Bowles reported with regard to the Department of Education Facilities Team tour of HCTC back in the middle of September. It was a very positive visit, and certainly it was an opportunity to showcase the good programs that are taking place at our school. But really, the purpose of that visit is to demonstrate how a new or renovated facility will better support the programming that we're trying to provide. And I think we made a very good case of that. As Mrs. Bowles said, there were over eighty applications that had been submitted. That team is traveling the state to visit those schools. But we've been informed, the priority list will be determined and released early next year. So hopefully, we'll be part of that priority list and can move forward. Moving on, with regard to resolutions, you as a board are going to take a look at resolutions for the School Boards Association tonight. The Executive Committee of the Superintendent's Association will also be considering for the first time two resolutions at their upcoming fall meeting. The resolutions have some similarities to what you'll be discussing tonight. But it's part of a renewed effort of our association to more aggressively and assertively advocate for public education. One resolution is drafted in support of public education in general, and the other one is in support of new multiple measures of college and career readiness indicators that will be part of graduation. Once our association takes action on those in the middle of this month, I'll provide copies to the board at next month's meeting. I think you'll find that they're very similar to what you're working on, and it's where the School Boards Association, Superintendent's Association do work well together. We do have a teacher nomination for you this evening, we'll get to that a little later in the agenda. But staff that you are not required to vote on that have joined us since last meeting. We have two new custodians, one at EEMS, Kurt Clark, and one at Ellsworth High School, Ramsey Abraham, who by the way, is a former Ellsworth student. And we have three new ed techs in special education. We have Amy Sheehan and Meg Donahue, who will be at Ellsworth Middle School, and Heather Colson, who will be in ed tech one, Ellsworth Elementary School. And I mentioned earlier in the agenda, I had some letters of resignation and retirement. Following staff members have decided to either move on or to retire. Will Stevenson, ed tech three at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School, has retired. Douglas Flag, carpentry instructor at HCTC, has submitted his resignation. We'll be looking for a replacement for that halftime position. Darcy Dyer in ed tech and cross-country coach at EMS is moving on. And Dawn Como, longtime custodian for the Ellsworth School Department, will be moving on at the end of the calendar year. And if I could just say, go back to one item that Mr. Clifford mentioned. You know, this is the first Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremony. And I know when Mr. Clifford brought this concept up to the board a year or two ago, he talked about an Academic Hall of Fame and an Athletic Hall of Fame. Certainly, last year's Academic Hall of Fame, the initial induction class was very representative of outstanding people who have graduated from Ellsworth High School. And when you look at the list of names with the group that's going to be inducted into the athletic side of that this week, I think the committee that's working now did an equally good job of getting a representative group of athletes to be representative, as they did back with the academic piece. So thank you for that work, Mr. Clifford. And concludes my report, unless you have any questions?
Ms. Sargent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item H, committee reports.
I know two committees I'm on have met, but we're going to deal with that later, and I'm sure policy-
Policy Committee has met.
Uh-huh.
And we are going to talk about policies later. But we are beginning our three-year review of all the policies, and we have two new policies that we're looking at in addition.
Okay, thank you.
Consideration of request for overnight out-of-state-
We have a staff presentation.
I'm so sorry. How about a staff presentation?
We have a staff presentation. We have from Ellsworth High School, Spanish teacher and EHS gifted and talented teacher, Carolyn Cutney is going to be talking to you about a course entitled Critical Thinking.
My sincere apologies.
Oh, that's all right, don't worry about it. But you should know, since you started on the traveling, that this past weekend, I went to Barcelona for a teacher training tour provided by the tour company that you approved last spring. And I was very impressed with how they handled everything, they were extremely thorough. And we even had a medical emergency, two of the teachers on the tour got food poisoning in the Newark Airport on our way there, and they handled it with amazing ease and professionalism. So I felt, I feel a thousand times more confident than I did yesterday, or you know, last Tuesday about it. So I'm very excited. So Gifted and Talented, I feel like in the certification process that I went through for Gifted and Talented, one of the things that is heavily stressed is the concept of critical thinking, and regardless of what discipline you're studying, being able to comprehend and analyze what is being told or what you're reading is really like of supreme importance for everybody. But particularly for people who are going to pursue intellectualism on a higher level. And so I've designed this course elective for anyone really in grades 11 through 12, but I'd like to give priority to Gifted and Talented students, because they're really the kids who this is aimed for. And it's all about being able to identify what is quality research, what are quality arguments, and how to decipher fake news from real news and the objective elements that, you know, people use to support their claims. So I went through and designed this, this is the textbook that I have chosen. I budgeted enough money for this year to be able to purchase books, so that shouldn't be a problem at all. And in the back of the flipside of this are all the standards that I've chosen. These are standards that we currently use in the English department. And underneath it, bulleted by letters, are the performance indicators. And so those are the things that, you know, teachers will look for to see have the kids met the standard. Reading comprehension and reading interpretation are similar comprehension, as you know, is do you really understand what's being said, even if it's subtle and nuanced? And interpretation is can you evaluate and analyze it? And then can you present your own arguments, which is the writing component? So we're going to be doing a lot of reading and writing, but also watching TV and looking at commercials. One of the things that I go back to when I think about this, when I was 12 years old, I bought a pearl necklace that I was told was an authentic faux pearl necklace. And I was very impressed with it as a 12-year-old. And when I got home, my father explained to me that faux is the French word for fake, and that I got ripped off. And I remember learning that lesson, that if I had known that word, I would have known that person was trying to scam me. And I went, I've never lost that lesson, and so language is very important, and, you know, reading between the lines. And so that's my, that's one of the things I tell students, like you have to know what you're reading and what people are really telling you. And sometimes they're very tricky about it, so. Anyway, that's what I would like to do. This course will be a semester elective. I don't see, at least at first, being more than one section per semester. So in terms of my course schedule as a teacher, that should be able to accommodate. So I hope you consider this class. Do you have any questions?
So if this course was, is this a, would this be considered like an English course or a philosophy course, or how would you characterize it?
Probably a little bit of both. There are some elements of formal logic that you typically see in philosophy courses. But there also are definitely elements of, you know, the standards are from the English department. And actually, there's some math, too, and a lot of deductive reasoning, it can be very mathematical. And so I'm hoping to sort of touch on some various things and maybe have other teachers do guest presentations. Tristan Bates suggested to me that we, that we look at Sudoku as a deductive reasoning thing in terms of it's a puzzle you have to solve, and you can do it with numbers, you don't have to do it with words. So I don't know, I see that as, you know, an example, certainly. But I think that, I don't know, I guess I hadn't really thought about how I would categorize it. But if I have to, right now, I guess I would probably put it more towards the English, the English side. A lot of language analysis.
But for now, it's just, it's an elective.
It's an elective, right, so it would fulfill an elective requirement.
You were, on a different topic, you were in Barcelona at a kind of an interesting time. What's going on over there politically?
It was fascinating. I will say that, it was really fascinating. There was a huge protest, a counter protest. So as you know, the Catalonians who wanted to secede, their election was stopped, and they were prevented from doing so and shut down by the federal government in Madrid. And so when I was there on Sunday, there was a counter protest. And so the people who supported staying in the country of Spain were marching to Parliament to sort of say, we are Spanish, we do not want to secede, you know. Yes, we have our regional pride, but we are also Spaniards. It was fascinating. And I have to say, too, and this is part of the good critical thinking, we can connect it. I was really unimpressed with some of the things that came up on my phone from CNN and some of the other American news outlets. They had headlines that were like, "Spain on the verge of civil war", and it was very sensationalist, and it was nothing like the verge of civil war. So it was, it was very peaceful, there was zero violence or problems. So it was nice to see that, and I felt very comfortable about, oh, this is perfect, this is, I felt very safe there. It was really interesting. I took lots of pictures, which I showed in my Spanish classes today, so that was really fun. And we had a good discussion about politics in my classes, so, so yeah, it was great. So we're already, we haven't even gone, and we're already benefiting from the decision, so. Thank you for everything, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Do I sit down now?
Consideration of request for overnight out-of-state trip, yes.
I believe members received in their packet, what kind of packet, copies of Mrs. Wright's handout. If you'd like a hard copy, Mrs. Wright also prepared these.
Hello, I'm Mrs. Wright. And here I am, asking again if we can go to Florida. I think this is maybe the 10th time, I'm not sure, this is the 9th or 10th time, that we're making requests to travel to Florida in April to perform at Disney World and to compete in Festival Disney at Disney World. And also, they have a new workshop that we're going to do this time called Broadway Magic, because so many people are interested in musical theater, ever since Glee came out, and it really kind of brought a resurgence into theater and musical theater. So they've, they've got a new workshop that we plan on doing. We would be traveling in April, which we usually do, April 10th through the 17th, which is, we would leave Tuesday night prior to vacation, and then we'd get home the Tuesday of vacation. We have done it different ways, and we found that that works best, because then kids actually have some recuperation time before coming back into school. That seems to work better. Our tour company that we are still with, I wanted to mention, they received special recognition from Disney last year for excellence and for the number of years. So it's a great tour company, that's who we've worked with. We've recommended other groups in Maine who now travel with them. So they're really good. In your packet you received, it was the same packet that I gave out to the parents at a parent meeting discussing this. The price has not gone up this year. And I just got the bus quote, and the bus quote has not gone up, which is kind of miraculous, because Disney just put up all their prices, increased them. And I know that a couple of our parents were looking at going and was, were pricing that as opposed, they are able to buy our package in a parallel parent trip that they do, and they couldn't even get the Disney tickets for the price of our entire trip, which includes meals and includes our parcooper passes. We do Universal Studios and Harry Potter, which is a big thrill. All of our award ceremonies, Rainforest Cafe for breakfast. So everything is included in ours. Let me see. I gave you a sample itinerary, that was our itinerary from last time, which will look mostly the same, except for Lanuba is closing in December, so we don't get to see Cirque du Soleil this time, which is very sad, but that's okay. And pretty much, it runs very, one thing we know for sure, we have to compete on Thursday when we get there. This is a high-volume weekend, and they've already said you'll be performing that day. So maybe get off the bus, get dressed, and go sing. We'll see if that's how it happens. And I included a payment schedule. We try to break it down for people and have some deadlines in there, so that it's a little bit at a time. We have a number of fundraisers. Money they make on their fundraisers can go towards their monthly deposit that month. And what else? And this year, for the first time, we created, Boosters did something that was a little more formal application for a scholarship for helping with the cost, because we don't, we've never had any show choir member not able to go. But more and more different needs come up, and so we're trying to formalize that a little bit more so that there's some expectation for the students as well on what they will do if they need some help. So that's the only new thing in the packet, I think. Any questions?
It's like, it's going to be an exciting trip.
Your son's going.
That's what I hear. That means he can't, that means he can't go to Europe.
I know that. He chose me this year, which is good, he'll have another chance for Europe, so.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination. Oh no, I move that we approve the request for overnight out-of-state trip to Florida as presented.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca, for doing that.
Consideration of teacher nomination.
Yes, we have one nomination for the board's consideration this evening. This is actually a current employee, Emily Nash, who's worked in the Adult Ed Program with Mrs. Sargent. But she is being nominated this evening to fill the halftime teacher position that was previously done by Deb Richards, who's moved on to become our instructional coach. Mrs. Sargent went through the interview process and has recommended Mrs. Nash. Certainly provided you with a biography for her. She's been working with us since 2015, is high school completion and English teacher for the Adult Ed Program. But she also has over 14 years' experience in various full and part-time teaching and literacy positions with the Summer Adult Ed Program. So certainly she has some experience that she brings to the program, and she's established herself as a valued member of the Ellsworth Adult Education Fac- excuse me, faculty. And Mrs. Sargent, was there anything you'd like to add before the board?
I just want to say that Emily is an extremely bright woman, and one of the things that, that sort of astounds me is how she likes to individualize things with students. She really is amazing at sort of assessing what they need and then really almost surgically figuring out what they need depending on their goals. So she's so focused on what people's goals are, which is a big priority for me, to connect career goals and academic goals with their day-to-day work. So it's been wonderful to see her have more time to do that work this year, because she was with us last year as well.
So with that, that's my nomination.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Emily Nash for our halftime teacher for Adult Ed as presented to first-year probationary contract for the 2017-2018 school year.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
I have first read?
Yes.
Am I on the wrong page?
You're on the right page.
Okay. But this is policy. The first read of policy, IJOC. School volunteers.
Yes.
Okay, so we just need a motion to approve the first read?
Well, I think with regard to the policy committee-
Yeah.
To me?
Yes.
Okay, sure. So we discussed the school, this is a new policy, school volunteers. We agreed on all the details of the policy. However, we were unable to- However, we were unable to agree on an appropriate volunteer training schedule, and we asked that we could discuss that at the next board workshop meeting.
Okay.
But all other pieces of the policy we have agreed on.
So, so we'll, do this as a first read, discuss it at the workshop, and then, okay.
Yes.
I think that with the first read, this policy came about, as you know from hearing Mr. McCloskey speak, we have a very active group of volunteers in the Elsworth School Department. Mr. McCloskey does an excellent job with his volunteer training. We also do background checks, and as we were looking at this, it occurred to us, we actually do not have a policy, so that's why this policy came up for discussion. It's a straightforward policy, and it's pieces that need to be in place. And I think it is valuable to have that conversation on training, although that training wouldn't be part of the specific policy language. But yes, you would treat this as a first read, and anything that came up between now and the next month's meeting, we looked at before you approved it.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the first read of policy, IJOC, school volunteers as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that. Hearing none, all those in favor? Policy KI, visitors to the school. Kelly, do you have anything about?
It was just, as you see it, there really wasn't much discussion. We both felt that the policy was good as, as written.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the first read of policy, KI, visitors to the schools as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that. Hearing none, all those in favor? First read of policy, AD, educational philosophy mission.
So there was only one, there was a paragraph in that policy that we would like to change. The prior policy stated that students will be proficient in ELA, math, science, social studies, and, and technology, but left out the arts, health, and physical education. And we would like for the new policy to state that children will be proficient in all required curriculum.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I moved to approve the first read of amended policy, AD, educational philosophy slash mission as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor? Accept, acknowledge and acceptance of policies review.
So the policy committee has begun their three-year review of all the policies, and we started with a number of them. There, there's a, what's the word, Dan? What is the section?
This, this is actually policy section A.
Policy section A.
What the committee's gonna do is take up one section per month, and some of the smaller sections, we may combine them into a month. But in reviewing all of section A, and you may find this with a number of your policies, most of these are required policies that were implemented back in the first year of our operation. The committee reviewed that, and this list here are a list of policies for which the committee sees no recommendations for changes.
So do you like a motion?
Sure.
I move that we acknowledge and accept the review of the following policies with no changes as recommended by the policy committee. And I can read these. AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action. AC dash R, grievance procedure for persons with disabilities. ACAa, harassment and sexual harassment of students. ACAa dash R, student discrimination and harassment complaint procedure. ACAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. ACAB dash R, employee discrimination and harassment complaint procedure. ACAD, hazing. ADA, school district goals and objectives. ADC, tobacco use and possession. ADC dash R, tobacco use and possession administrative procedure. And finally, ADF, school district commitment to learning results.
Do you have a second? Do you second the motion?
And just as a matter of procedure for the board, the list that Mr. Markosian just read, we included the administrative procedures there, which are all of your policy notes with the, the R. Technically, the board does not approve those. You approve the policies and direct administration to do those, but we'd like to include them in the review so that there was a note that they were done, and also that the board is aware of what those are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Discussion of proposed MSBA resolutions?
There was one more piece. There were two policies that the committee did discuss. One is ADAA, which is the school system ethical commitment to standards for ethical and responsible behavior. This addresses the student code of conduct. And another one, that is accountability and reporting to the public. The policy committee wanted to refer those two policies to a board workshop for discussion with the entire board.
Okay.
And you don't have to take action on that.
Okay.
So those were two policies that were included in section A but not?
Correct. That's correct.
ADAA?
ADAA and AEC.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Discussion of proposed MSBA resolutions for 2017-2018. Okay, we discussed these at our, at our workshop, if I am correct. And, and they include school, school board training, career and technical education opportunities, regionalization of services, technology in the classroom, graduation pathway for all learners, support of public education, funding for proficiency-based graduation standards, and men's schedule for vocational education programs.
I think the board has had these in their packet as well. So I think your purpose for looking at them this evening is to give guidance to your delegate and alternate delegate for the delegate assembly.
So I move that we support the resolutions that Mrs. Thomas just read as presented, and direct our delegate to vote at the MSBA delegate assembly.
I second that.
All those in favor? And Paul, you're a delegate, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you're all alternate.
But he's not going to tell us.
It's like the delegate, the alternate's gonna be attending as an alternate.
Okay, seven, approval and award of snow removal and salting sanding bid for 2017-18.
And that was the finance committee?
That was the finance committee, and we met, and were presented with the bids. And I don't have the paperwork.
I believe that was sent to all of you. Did you all get, okay?
I don't know. Okay, and Mr. Drew and I are on that committee, and we are going to suggest and ask for your approval in giving the bid for EEMS and EHS to RF Jordan. This is for plowing and sanding. And HCTC and the Elsworth School Department bus garage to Clark Construction. Each company was asked to send a variety of materials to submit the bidding for snow removal separately from sanding. And we felt confident that this was the way that the bid should go, so.
And what's represented there is the, actually the low complete submission bid by the bidders. The policy, excuse me, the finance committee's recommendation is also supported by the superintendent and our director of facilities. We've worked with both of those companies in the past, and they've provided excellent
I make a motion to approve and award the snow removal and salting sanding bids for 2017-2018 as presented and recommended by the finance committee.
I second that.
Discussion?
Brenda, how many bids did we get?
We had it from two different.
We received bids from two different companies this year.
Only two?
Only two.
Only two. Yeah.
Historically speaking, we've received bids from three companies.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? We also discussed the school bus lease purchase at that meeting, and looked at a couple of different prices that were submitted. Mr. Saunders did some work on this for us, and came up with a suggestion on which direction we would like to go.
And this, this issue was, was complicated by the fact that, number one, as you know, we have submitted an application for a new school bus to replace a bus. But in the interim, since we, our application was not met with success, we did have another bus that was determined to have reached the end of its life, so we need to purchase a bus. Mr. Saunders, who is in the audience this evening, did go out and find four separate bids for us. The one that he recommended to the finance committee meets all of the school department's needs. We will have to transfer camera and radio equipment from the bus that's being decommissioned to the new bus. But it ends up being the low bid and also the, the bus that can be delivered to us in the quickest fashion. So we've asked the policy, excuse me, the finance committee, sorry about that, we've asked the finance committee to approve that and recommend it to the full board. And if I might give you this paperwork today, we did not have bids for financing at the time the finance committee met. We received a total of three bids, the most recent coming today, business manager Helen received it. She put out requests for bids to five different vendors, three responded. We would like to recommend Gorham Leasing Group as the successful low bidder, at a rate of 2.8 percent, an annual payment that meets what we've budgeted for. We have done business with Gorham in the past, and they are a reputable firm, so we would recommend taking the recommendation that the policy committee has accepted from Mr. Saunders and the financier from Gorham Leasing as recommended by business manager Helen and myself.
I move that we approve the school bus lease purchase as presented and recommended by the finance committee.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Saunders.
This particular bus was ordered by another bus company, and was originally an $85,000 bus. And because they couldn't deliver it, we blocked out and cut it for $81,000.
Calendar announcements. School board workshop, October 24th, in the Elsworth School Department conference room at 6 o'clock. Policy committee meeting, November 1st, the Elsworth School Department conference room at 6:00 PM. And school board meeting Tuesday, November 14th, City Hall, Council Chambers, 6:30 PM. Which means we are not being displaced by election this year. Correct, okay. Next item is adjournment.
Before I do that, I'd like to thank Marcia Golds-Drew for her service to the board.
Thank you.
I believe this will be your last school board meeting.
Yeah, I guess I did, I didn't realize it was in fall election, I didn't pay attention.
Unless you run as a writing candidate.
Right.
We're never getting out of this board workshop.
No, I've enjoyed it.
It's been a pleasure working with you, and thank you for all your contributions.
It's been a great experience.
Yes, thank you.
And the administrator, the staff is great, the administrators, and it really, there is definitely a lot that goes on that people don't realize, and it's just, it's a great experience. And I, and it is too bad, I wish that somebody was running, or I hope that someone will push for a write-in, because it, it's really good to see as much as you can of our education system from different sides, and you do learn from the political side and the government side. And it is, is a lot of knowledge, and it's just, it's really, really good experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I move that, having no further business, we adjourn this meeting.
Would you like to second that, Marcia?
I'll second that, sure.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, 7:38, thank you.